And you're on.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I apologize we're starting a bit later than we intended. We've already started the meeting in open session before going into executive session and now we're reconvening in open session. Per Governor Baker's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass General Law Chapter 30A Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. Members of the public can access the meeting via Montague Community Television Broadcast. The extension of the emergency open meeting law provisions were signed into laws Chapter 20, Section 20 of the Acts of 2021. And I think we will have to quote a new one by next time. I think we'll have to add because there's been another extension. The school committee reserves the right to implement additional remote participation procedures and will notify the public of these procedures as it is practical to do so. Any members of the public who wish to join the meeting may do so by accessing the link on the GMRSD website under School Committee, Notices and Agendas for upcoming meetings, and it will list tonight's school committee meeting for that. We are live streaming as well as broadcasting on MCTV and a recording will be available on the on MCTV and the district website after the meeting. And we'd like to welcome all of our visitors. If you're in our Zoom audience, please remember if you're in the audience to keep your microphone off and also your camera off if you're just in the audience. And this would be the time that we have public participation, which is policy BEDH. It has been reinstated to hold it remotely, but I don't believe we have anyone this evening who is wishing to take advantage of that.
Not tonight.
Okay, thanks, Tina. Okay. Important events, Brian.
Sure, before we get into important events and I want to let the school committee know, I'm actually away with my family and I'm not, I'm not at the beach, but I'm close enough to it that I've locked myself in a room for some privacy. But I wanted to just take a moment to be able to put some new faces to names. I've introduced Kerry Heathwaite in writing before. And Kerry is the new principal at Sheffield Elementary School. And I've also introduced Walter Houston, who is the new principal at Gill Elementary School for both Kerry and Walter, who join us from two different states. They're both individuals who grew up here in Massachusetts, went off to share some portions of their careers in other states. And we were fortunate enough to land them as our top choices on our two search committees. And so Kerry, if I could introduce you first, if you just wanted to tell them a tiny, tell the committee a tiny bit about yourself and then we'll go to Walter.
Great, yes, thank you so much for having me this evening. I am so excited to have joined the Sheffield Elementary School family and the larger school district. So thank you so much. I was living here up until six years ago. A job change of my partner brought us to New Jersey, Southern New Jersey. So if you're ever driving down south and you cross that Delaware Memorial Bridge, that's about where I was living. And then there was an opportunity to return to what I consider home. So I, my family is excited to come back. They were Montague Bluefish, they were on the T-ball teams and the softball teams. And so it's just been, you know, a journey that feels like coming home. Last week I had principal or popsicles with the principal, my first week of it on the playground. And I was, you know, thrilled to get to meet some of the students and their families. One grandma came from Amherst and she was all about starting up back to those all-school meetings. So I just continue to be excited about, you know, learning more about the community and our families and having an amazing school year. Does anyone have any questions for me? Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kerry, and welcome. And for both Kerry and Walter, who are, they're moving out of state before I introduce Walter. They're moving back to Massachusetts. And so it's been a whirlwind summer and whirlwind start for both of them to get rolling in the middle of a pretty significant relocation. So the next principal at Gill Elementary School is Walter Houston.
Whoops, sorry about that, Brian. Hi, I'm Walter Houston. I am coming from you, to you from Bo, New Hampshire tonight. I had to come home this afternoon, so I am up here in Bo. However, the good news is we have found a house. We are closing hopefully August 24th. We'll be living in Deerfield. So we are very excited to be moving to Western Mass. Like Brian said, I grew up in Massachusetts, but I grew up on the eastern side of the state and then came up to New Hampshire. So now we are excited to be part of Western Mass and getting to know Western Mass and getting to know Greenfield and North Hampton and Deerfield and Gill. And I'm really excited about doing that. The last couple of weeks have been a little crazy because I've been living in a hotel room in order to commute back and forth. It's a little far, Concord, New Hampshire. So I've been living in a hotel room during the week and then coming home on the weekends. But tonight I had to come up to Concord, so I will be back at Gill tomorrow. It's getting to know, I'm getting to know the staff. We're having little meetings daily with the staff, so I'm getting to know them, getting to know the building, and then hopefully getting to know the community in the next couple of weeks. So I'm really looking forward to a great year, so.
Thanks very much, Walter. And thank you, Kerry, and welcome aboard. You have enough to do in your transition for the summer. So I just wanted to introduce you and I'd like to dismiss you both from the rest of the meeting. Thank you both for joining us.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks. And we do have another person observing tonight who will be officially part of our group. Next time we have a meeting, we have Brooke Martineau. We appointed her at our last meeting and we're very happy that Brooke will be joining us. So she's going to sit in tonight and see what we're up to. And then by the next meeting, she will be participating. Welcome, Brooke.
Hi, Brooke.
Thank you. Okay, you can move on with important events, probably, Brian.
Okay, so as Kerry had mentioned, she did her first popsicle, popsicles with the principal introduction at Sheffield last week and has another one scheduled for tomorrow for 4:00 PM to 5:00 PM. And then on August 4th from 1:00 to 2:00 PM. We have made some changes to our mentor training for this year, thanks to Jean Powers. And mentor training will be taking place on August 22nd. On August 24th at 6:00 PM, Great Falls Middle School New Student Orientation. And then the ninth grade and new student orientation for the high school will be at 6 o'clock on August 25th. New staff orientation will be Friday, August 26th. That's a full day orientation at the high, in the high school library. And this year we're also adding an orientation for power professionals that are new to the district. And that'll take place on Thursday, August 25th. The opening day for staff is Monday, August 1st. And then opening day for students in grades one through 12 is Thursday, September 1st. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Brian. We do not have a student representative report during the summer, but we're looking forward to having one in the fall. Join us. Is there anything else you wanted to let us know about as part of your report this evening, Brian?
No, nothing that I can think of off the top of my head. And that's partially because I've been detached for about a week for the first time, so.
Right, and vacationing is important, too.
Yeah, the hard part will be the 400 emails that I have to catch up on, so.
Always, always a price to pay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Business and Operations Report, Joanne.
Okay. Let's see, I just, I wanted to give you, I have budget transfers for May and June. So that is just transfers, just for your information, no vote necessary. If there were any transfers that needed votes, you've already done that. I wanted to give you an update on the Hillcrest floor project. So the Gill floor project is complete. We finished the floors up there and they are getting the building set back up. The Hillcrest floor project, the asbestos has been removed. And when we were getting ready to put the, the flooring in there, what we had was an issue with the surface underneath the floor, underneath those asbestos tiles, but before you get to the cement base. So there was a surface in there that it appeared that we would be able to level that out with a leveler and then the floor would be on top of that. But when the flooring person came, they tested it and they said because it's petroleum-based, the flooring material would like seep into it instead of securing to it. And so all of that floor base needs to be removed and then the floor can get put down. So that is putting us a little higher on the cost, which means there's not going to be enough money to do any rugs. I did talk to the town and they suggested if we needed more money, we, we could go back to a special town meeting in the fall. But we're going to have to wait and see what this, how this turns out. So in, in the next couple of weeks, I'll have a better idea of if we're over budget or not on that or if we're able to stay within budget and just not do rugs. I can't imagine that there'll be any money left for the rugs. So that's where we are with the Hillcrest floor projects. So they are on their way to removing that surface. They're still hoping to have the floors done by about a week before the teachers return to school. So they have until the 21st to do that, which is a Sunday. And they've been working on weekends as well, so. At your next meeting, I should be able to give you another update on where we are and what that money looks like. We're also working on closing out the fiscal '22, closing out the year. So we're buttoning that up and hopefully we'll have an operating statement updated for you for the end of the year by your next meeting. And then the last two things I have are the warrants for approval and the banking resolutions. And so that you have in your business section. I will leave that off there.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Joanne? Okay, thanks, Joanne. Moving on to school committee reports, as Joanne mentioned, we need to have a warrant subcommittee approval, which is a vote. We have a total of five warrants this evening because some are cleaning up the past fiscal year and some are paying for things for this year. And I will read them if it's acceptable to the committee. I will then entertain a motion to approve the five of them all at once. The first is a fiscal year '22 cleanup warrant, number 3242, in the amount of $229,413.68 dated 6/30/22. Another fiscal year '22 cleanup warrant, the warrant is number 3243 in the amount of $174,497.54, also dated 6/30/22.
Whoops.
Lost you, Jane.
It's a good amount.
Jane.
Which one was she on? The third one?
Yes.
Are you back, Jane?
Yes, sorry, my connection is terrible. We lost our cable earlier in the week and apparently they didn't attach it well. So thank you, Heather.
I didn't do anything yet, so I, we last heard you on the third one.
Okay, so that is a to pay the bills. It's number 3304 in the, the amount of $24,208.44 dated 7/27/2022. Another fiscal year '23 student activity warrant. Is that, is that correct, Joanne?
Yes, there are two high school student activity warrants.
Right, but the lettering is different than usual, SAS.
Oh, student activity, yeah.
Yeah. Warrant and the number is 3302. That's in the amount of $1,119.25 dated 7/23/2022. And the other high school activity account is warrant number 3303 in the amount of $7,067.67. I'll entertain a motion, motion to approve those as one motion. I heard, did I hear Nick and then Heather?
Yeah.
Let's go with that, okay? And then we will do a roll call vote as we do. Heather?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
And me, yes, thank you all. Moving on to the next item, we'll start the section of business at the meeting. The first is a discussion of the policy subcommittee meetings. I'll just review what we've been doing. And then I just wanted people to weigh in because I think it's important that we all weigh in from time to time if we like the method that we're using or if we'd like to change something. Right now, at the beginning of COVID, we transitioned to not having our policy subcommittee meet regularly. Instead, we would make note of any policies that needed updating. We generally use the MAS-C, Mass Association of School Committee recommendations and our lawyers' recommendations. And then no matter how we do it, whether it goes to subcommittee first or to the full committee, it always has three meetings at the full committee before we vote on any policy change. And right now we're doing it simply by doing it as a whole group. The policy subcommittee members are Heather, Bill, myself. If they would prefer to meet separately ahead of time to weigh in on some of these things and do some research, we certainly can do that. If people prefer that we continue the way we are, that's acceptable at this time, too.
I have no objection.
To doing it the way we're doing?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, Heather.
I mean, I don't, I guess I'd have to look at what come, came up this year by them, I see, but I don't think we have anything pressing, so I'm fine with how we're doing it, but I'm fine with meeting.
Okay, we, for the time being, I think we'll do it this way. We've got a couple of things, they've been coming in one or two at a time as opposed to a lot. It's possible after the November meeting at the Cape, which is the yearly meeting for Mass Association of School Committees, generally then their policy division will come out with a large list of policies that need adjusting or updating with any, I think we've been keeping up with the ones that we've been notified. So we may not need to, but if there are more than just a few, we'll do what we did the last time there were and go through it as a subcommittee, section by section, and then bring them to the full committee before we move on. So if that is acceptable, if no one has any other thoughts on that. Thank you. The next is similar, the warrant subcommittee, which consists of Heather, Bill and myself during, the warrants can be approved any number of ways. What we've been doing since COVID began is the committee has named me as the signer, but all of the committee is given in an email link all of the information on those warrants that I spoke about tonight. All of the details are contained in the document that goes to every school committee member to review. I go in and sign for the committee, but then the committee has to officially vote to approve the warrants having been signed. If there's any wish for the warrant subcommittee to start meeting in, in person or by Zoom to do the work ahead of time instead of me doing that, I'm willing to, but I'm also willing to continue. John?
So, I mean, I look at those warrants and I kind of approve them as a matter of course. I mean, as I don't really know whether those expenditures are, you know, I, I just assume they're all good. But you guys on the warrant committee, do you look at them in, in close detail and then red flag something and then bring to the attention of the rest of the committee? If there's something not right, not?
Well, anyone can, I mean, as I say, in our packet, there's the page-by-page description of what the item is, what it pays for, how much it costs. And anyone can ask about, there's always supporting information at the business office that is available for anyone on the committee. And warrant subcommittee simply has been doing it that way as well. They would see if there was anything, otherwise it's pretty standard after, after you become familiar with the system, what the bills are and, and if they're, and I have gone in with questions at different times and said, I don't understand, this looks like something I don't understand. And then it's been explained to me.
Yeah, it's just, it's extremely granular. And, you know, that's good for local democracy, I guess, at least compared to what I was used to. Right, in terms of.
And that's why as a regional school committee, it's important that, that there's an awareness and all the members are able, whether they're on the subcommittee or not, to look at the information and ask any questions they might have. I don't know if Heather and Bill would prefer to have the meetings, usually the meetings before, it seems so long ago. Pre-COVID seems like a whole other decade ago. It really wasn't that long, but it was a while, Heather.
It was a long time ago. I'm fine with, I mean, to be honest, how they were before, we were only meeting to sign because you need the time beforehand to review them and catch anything. So really, it isn't much of a difference other than you're the only one signing. So I'm, I'm fine with the way it is.
Okay. Bill, that sound okay?
Yes, because all the information's available to us a week before, so I have no problem as long as I'm getting to view the numbers.
Okay, thank you. And that, that might be something that I should mention for anybody listening or watching. Many years ago, what was standard at a school committee meeting was for the information to not come up until the meeting. And then the members were supposed to go through it while they were meeting and read it, which didn't seem like a really effective way of doing it. And I know some districts, when I go to the regional meetings or the statewide meetings, some districts, some of the school committee members have had to push back against that and say, we can't look at those with any, any kind of a discerning eye if we're having a meeting at the same time. And so that's not something that this, this district has done that I'm ever aware of. But we're even more conscious of having all of the information available to all the members to look at ahead of time. And then, and Joanne is always very anxious to answer any questions. You can learn a lot, ask, actually by asking a question that I always think it seems silly, but I learned things I didn't know. So, all right, thank you. So we'll continue that. I guess we said we, we could have a vote, but the vote is on there only in case we wanted to, since we're keeping it the same as it is at the moment. I don't think that's necessary unless someone else does.
Right.
Okay. The next item is discussion of the open Gill School Committee seat. Unfortunately, the appointment part is not going to happen. We have not had a volunteer send in a letter of interest from Gill as of yet. Will therefore continue to publicize it. Probably Sabrina will ask the two newspapers to continue to run the ad. So we'll see if someone in Gill might like to join us. Now that we have our Montague seats filled, that's wonderful. And if we could get one more in Gill, we would have a full complement of nine members. So we'll continue to put that out there. The next is discussion of how we want to meet, whether it's remote or in person. The reason we're still able to be virtual is because the state legislature did pass an extension of the ability for any groups like school committees, select boards, finance committees to meet virtually till March of 2023, I believe. Is that correct, though?
Yes.
Yes. So it's extended till then. There was some interesting information that came forward when the legislature was discussing it. And part of the rationale they gave was that by having the meetings virtually, it, they're available to more people to be in the audience. A virtual audience is, has, and many times has been larger than an in-person audience. We can do whatever people wish on this committee and I don't want to be making that decision myself. I did for this meeting because we had short notice. And since I'd had some hand surgery this morning, I decided I could do this more effectively from home. And I'm willing to hear anybody's views on it. I think the only thing that I would ask is that people always keep in mind that we would really need a quorum however we decide to meet. And sometimes that can be a bit challenging if somebody's not well or needs to be quarantined because someone in the house has been exposed to COVID or any of the many things that have become the norm.
Or we're down a member.
Yeah, or family members, or they're taking care of someone at home. We've also had that just in general without illness. Often we're lucky to have school committee members who have children or spouses or other family members at home that they're caring for and they still want to be able to participate. So I'm willing to hear what people are thinking. Heather?
Same as usual. Each time this comes up, I'm pretty content with virtual and just makes it easy to attend. And we're down a member, so that makes getting a quorum that much trickier, so.
Okay.
As easy as possible, you know?
Yeah, thanks. Anyone else?
I'm just wondering if community, a, a community attitude toward the school district would be better if we met in person, but that's just a conjecture. I, I don't know whether, how, how it would affect. I mean, personally, I like meeting at home. It's, it's comfortable.
That's a good, good question. Anyone else have a thought?
I mean, I'll say the same thing I said last time, which is that my, my schedule's really tight. And, you know, being able to basically just in time sign into meetings because the virtual is really what makes it possible for me to participate.
Yes, and I know sometimes you have really, really pushed to get here on time just so that you could participate. We do appreciate people going, you know, the extra mile to do that, for sure. Anyone else? Okay, that being said, I guess for the time being, we'll continue this way. If there is a concern or the need to address it again, we can just keep it on the agenda every so often so that it's, it's there for people to let us know what they're thinking. And if the members wish to change, it certainly let me know. Bill?
No, I was.
I'm sorry, yeah, it lights up the screen, which is, thank you, sorry about that. Okay, thank you. The next item, we need to appoint a school district physician. Brian, do you have a name for us?
Yeah, it's the same physician. We're fortunate enough that Dean Singer, who during, has been a, a great asset for us. It's just a matter of the school committee annually needs to reappoint the school physician. So I'm strongly recommending that we continue with Dr. Singer. I think he's been great. And under very challenging circumstances, I think he's done a remarkable job of working with Melissa Bednarski as well as other outside organizations to get us access to everything from vaccines on campus to additional PPE, doing physicals for students who need them for sports and can't afford to get them otherwise. So, yeah, I think he's been outstanding and he's willing to continue.
Yes, thank you. I had meant to say that myself. I noticed he was very, very helpful in getting the materials to protect the district and also getting the vaccination clinic set up with our nurses, Melissa and the other nurses. It's been a real plus for the community to have those brought to the community, certainly. Because at times it's been very challenging for people to sign up and get their vaccinations. That's made it much easier. Heather?
Speaking of, actually, I didn't want to let this go. Okay, I, I'm on vacation next week, but, or our next meeting. Um, but there is another clinic at Sheffield at 3:00 on the 23rd of August, so.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks, Heather.
Thank you. So Sheffield is providing one on the 23rd of August. Great, great, that's been wonderful. So I will entertain a motion to reappoint Dr. Dean Singer as the district physician. Nick, thank you.
Second, Heather.
And Heather. And I will take a roll call vote.
Yes.
Thank you, Bill?
Yes.
Heather? I'm sorry, Jennifer?
Yes.
Looking at the wrong thing. Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
And myself, yes, thank you. Banking resolutions, we need to vote those this evening, and I think Joanne will give us the explanation. They are in your packet.
So each year we have the banking resolutions that you vote. And that allows Cynthia, the treasurer, to go to the banks and make sure everything is set up appropriately. And so this year we have a couple of changes, so. On the Greenfield Savings Bank. Resolutions, that is for our student activity accounts. We need to add our new principals, so. This would list everybody who is a signer on the account, so the principals are signers on those accounts. And then the admin assistants can access the account to see the balances and see the details in there. And Cynthia is also able to sign all the checks. It also gives. Heather is our assistant treasurer, so she would also have access to these banks and be a signer. So that's the Greenfield Savings Bank one. The other one is for all of our other banks, and so I don't believe there are any changes there. It gives all the same people. The access to them with their different levels, Cynthia as a signer, Amanda and I as. Making inquiries in transfers. But we only initiate transfers. Cynthia needs to authorize them afterwards.
Okay, that's our system of checks and balances. Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the banking resolutions.
I'm up.
Nick?
Haley, second.
Second.
Haley seconded. And is there any discussion or any questions about that? Anyone have anything they need to ask? Okay, in that case, we'll take a roll call vote. Heather?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
And myself, yes, thank you. The next item, we have two sets of minutes to approve. The first is from the June twenty eighth, two thousand twenty two meeting, and the second is the July twelfth, two thousand twenty two meeting. If it's acceptable, I will entertain a motion to approve those together.
I'm up.
Heather, thank you.
Second.
Second, Bill? Any discussion of those? In that case, we'll take our roll call vote again. Heather?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
And myself, yes, thank you. If anyone has any agenda requests, Brian, Bill and I. Generally meet the Monday of the week before our next school committee meeting to put the agenda together. We welcome any ideas for requests from any members, so please let us know at any point if you have something. Heather?
Um, I had mentioned it in passing, but just officially, I won't be here for the next meeting. We'll be away.
Okay.
And welcome, Brooke.
Okay, thank you. Bill, John?
Uh, yeah, I'm also gonna be away the next meeting, which I think is the ninth of August. Is that correct?
Yes, our next meeting is the ninth.
Yeah, I I won't be here for that meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Neither will I. Ah, I may, I can, I can, I can make it virtually, so I take that back.
Okay, thank you. That has saved us more than once.
I will be on vacation, but I'll be.
But you have reception. Good, good.
With that being said, I will be on vacation. If you need a quorum, feel free to ask. I can't say that. We won't be doing something, but if you do need to hit me up, go for it.
You don't want to carry your phone around while you're like getting ice cream and things like that. It would be. Thank you. I appreciate everybody working as hard as they do to make these things work. Nick?
Yeah, I'm gonna be on vacation that week also. I'm not gonna be around.
Oh, okay. So double welcome, Brooke. It looks like, Bill, you can still do it, right?
Yes.
Okay, so it means just it looks like we're still, we're still okay. All right, thank you, though. And the dates of the next scheduled meetings, as people have mentioned, August ninth. And then the twenty third is the second one in August as well. And I would just like to remind everyone that our September meetings are different weeks than usual. Usually our meetings are the second and fourth week of the month. But when we did our calendar, we positioned the September meetings on the sixth and the twentieth, which happened to be the first and the third meetings. And actually, the reason those were changed is I had something at one of those weeks that I could not change. So just as a reminder, so people will, I know sometimes I just put it on my calendar, I had the second and the fourth, the second and the fourth. It's a change, so I'm sort of redlining that for you.
Jane, and in October, do we go to the eighteenth and twenty fifth?
Yes, September was the only, that's right. I think, yeah, you hadn't joined us yet when we did that. That was the only month we changed that. Sometimes we have to change one because of a holiday or something else, but it looks as if we're clear otherwise for the rest.
I misspoke. I think I meant the eleventh and twenty fifth of October.
I I would have to look at an actual calendar.
Second and fourth.
Okay, second and fourth, except for September, as it exists. Okay?
Sounds good.
All right, thank you all. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I moved.
Heather?
Second.
Second, Nick? And we'll have a roll call vote. Heather?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
And me, thank you all again. Appreciate it.
Good night.
Thank you.